Good evening everyone, welcome to the council meeting. I was quite surprised to see so many people here tonight, but anyway we'll get on with the meeting.
If I may, Town Mayor, before we begin, just to illustrate to the public gallery, because there is an unusually large number of people here this evening, we do have rules on conduct and you must conduct yourself properly and if you don't, the Town Mayor can be asked to remove you. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, I should do my part for them. We have the time, but then we have to pen down. Come on now. Can you send me pen back? There was water pen. Okay, right, we start. First of all, I think I'll apologize for this. Apologies for absence. Oh, sorry. Item one, sorry, item one, motions to appoint Sabina Doherty to the position of town clerk. And I'll write to not be done. To Stapleford Town Council. Remen's date was the 2nd of September. Councilor.
One second.
All in favour? Welcome, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Sabina.
Sorry, I'm late.
I'm sorry about that.
This is just.
It wasn't done, yes, I was not.
So, look, you can get out, right, don't you know?
Okay, item two on the agenda, is apologies for absence.
We have apologies from councillor John Buxton.
Right, item three, declarations of interest. Board of council.
Oh.
Board of council, yeah.
So, just a good point for all, it helps supremacists to have members.
Yes.
Just give you names as soon as you. Councillor Grindel.
Councillor Grindel.
Let me catch up on that.
Councillor John Ward.
Cal Frey, Everton.
Thank you.
There is a law motion.
Declarations of interest, I thought we were still doing that.
That's what we do, declarations of interest.
Oh, sorry, you're not, that's why I'm not doing that.
So, that one happens.
A lot much, yes.
That's correct. Yeah, I need to declare an interest in, oh, it's got to item seven now, sorry. Seven A, Higgins Lane, because it's a planning application and obviously, as you know, planning applications, if you're predetermined, you can't debate them or vote on them. So, I'm declaring an interest in that and I'm hoping now I will support the input side to make it obvious which way they support it, they declare the same interest as well, thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, item seven A on this one, yeah.
Mr Mayor, I must declare an interest because the residents of Carpenters Court have asked me to help them.
What's that on the down track?
That's the pedestrian crossing.
Oh, okay, right.
For that predetermined.
David, just to remind you here that as an armed plan, anything like that has to come up. Then, obviously, I cannot speak about it.
On the, as Richard points out, the zebra crossing thing has been a campaign issue. As the agent for the Liberal Day protest and state for the campaign, I did write literature about it. It's probably worth your note.
Right, we're on item.
I'd like to speak though, I'm predetermined, so you can talk as far. I didn't think it was allowed. You're not hiding, I didn't think it was.
Can we have some clarification on this please, Mr Mayor? What? When on top we can speak?
Clarification on.
The pedestrian crossing, because I've been asked by the residents who are here this evening to help them, to get this crossing, the implementation of this crossing. So, are we allowed to speak on it or are we?
I should say yes. So, I can speak as well though, because I've also been approached by residents to speak on it, thank you. If you think you're behind us, I'll just change the rules.
Chair, if I may, you are allowed to speak, obviously, you've already declared your position on the matter, so people are aware of that. It's when it comes to the borough council that there's more of an issue there because that's where the application will actually be determined. So, just for those borough houses that aren't planning it at the borough, just to be aware.
Right, one minute from the previous meeting. Do we have a nominee? Second to that. Which is second to that.
Mr Chair, can I ask please if everyone could speak up clearly so that those of us at the back can hear, please? If they could please bear that in mind when they're speaking. If that would be a great help, please, Mr Chair, thank you.
Did you all hear that?
Yeah.
Okay. The form again, all in favour of the debate of the week? And item B is the traffic and transport, the lighting of the.
That's for up, goes up.
Yes, what I would like to say at the moment first is may I thanks to Richard why I was standing for me, why I was off.
I had a fond.
I was in hospital, so we weren't, I wasn't describing off.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, item five, co-op, cooperation to the vacancy in Stapleford North is the next.
So, we've got three candidates, you should all have their paperwork coming through the post or via email. Hopefully, you've all read that, read those applications. We do have the opportunity, according to the policy that we adopted at the last meeting, to ask them to speak. Is that something that we want to do?
Yeah, I think it's something, if we can hear us.
Okay, so if I propose that, we're going to let them speak, and then second?
My second.
Okay. I think it's handed to you all.
Yeah, they are. Do we have all the candidates? Hello, okay. Okay, so we're going to ask you to speak in order, which is on the agenda. So, it will be Catchmere first, followed by Pitt and then Ross. But if you can all leave the room and then, because there's three candidates. So, we'll take a first vote, which will be like a knockout round. And candidate with the least votes will be eliminated and then there'll be a second round of voting and the whole council will then vote on the final two candidates. If there is a draw in the first round between either of the candidates, there will be an additional round where only those two candidates will be voted on and the one with the least votes will be knocked out for the final round. Does that make sense? If I can. If it comes to that, I'll explain it again, anyway, hopefully.
Through, through, through Instagram. Unless, unless at any point in time, there's no more majority, I think. Is that not the, is that not the case? Or are we going up, or are we going two rounds in perspective?
I think because there's three candidates. I don't know.
Go, 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 if you want. Get up if you want.
It says, it says that there's enough.
If that's not what I've got, we're not to bring a candidate, then it goes. It's a point of semantics, I just like.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine, we have to.
Sorry, just a question. So, I agree with the round thing, brilliant idea. So, when we get to the next round, if there's two left and say for example, one gets, I don't know, let's say three, the one gets two. Would the one with three, would they automatically win, not win? And if you abstain, does that mean then it's counted if your votes aren't counted? Does it count as a no or what? I'm not sure.
Sorry, can you just, just try to speak, can you repeat that?
Okay, so, the round's a brilliant idea, I love it.
It sounds modest now.
Yeah, brilliant idea. When we get to the second round, if somebody has, say for example, three votes, somebody has two votes, then I presume the person with three will win and the abstains, those people that abstain, they're not be counted either way, is that correct, not correct?
I think that's, that's, it is the overall majority effectively, so yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
They don't count. So, just to clarify, our standing order say absolute majority.
Yeah.
But we checked in the O book, I don't know what the O book's called, it's the guide for councils on the law and so on. And that that book says overall majority, it doesn't say absolute majority.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm sure we proceeded with the voting, I guess.
Yeah, so for the first round, it says absolute majority in the standard orders, so I don't know. If that just means the majority, so high majority, so. So, if there's no, if there's no overall majority on this round, then. So, shall, so can we just clarify then, overall majority? It's up to other two more than the total. Boots, yeah? Yeah.
Okay, are we, are we working, where the show hands? Okay. Right, so the first candidate, Catherine, can I have a show of hands for Catherine?
Three, three over one.
Right, show of hands for Pippa Halndes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, oh, nine at the end.
And number three, Ross Murphy there.
You don't have to.
Okay. All that, that looks quite, quite clear, which is George Noem, there's Pippa, so we, we, so. Pippa Halndes, okay. How's your man? Okay, I think there is probably a door under there.
Mine, just mine is the pink, we have. Oh, have you not seen my phone type? Well, if you play with you and I still have.
Pardon? Ross. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good day, Mr Mayor, but you've got to wear a hoodie to go.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hope you're friends are okay, guys.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, very.
Bye.
Thank you very much. May, stamp of congratulations to Pippa. And would you please sign a lot, hold there as well, please. And the next, item six, if you can proceed, item six, is to appoint thirty to the bank, I believe that can be.
Yeah, that can be, that no longer advised. Councillor Grindel is informed that he is actually now happy to carry on his subsidiary, so we don't need to, you are for six.
Right, item seven, this is, this is, or, I think Richard, it's fifteen things, zebra crossing on by seventeenth of September. Well, I see, I see we have a member of the public who speaks.
I've got a copy of the standing orders here, I don't know if anyone's actually read them. It does actually say, and I didn't write the rules, it said, rules and rules and they have to be a danger, we're always told. It actually says here, public participation in planning matters sixty-two G. And I've actually discussed this with the leaders of the council. Oh, sorry, I mentioned it, sorry, sorry. I've just promoted it to the. Anyway, it says here, G, objectors will be heard first, giving the applicant a right to reply to any matters that they raise. Obviously, there's no objectors. The applicant or supporter of the application will not be permitted to speak if no objectors wish to be heard. Well, there's no objectors wishing to be heard, so anyone supporting is not allowed to be heard either. And, of course, it actually says that in here. So, we do need to follow the standing orders?
Yes, okay.
I've got a copy of G, I haven't.
Right, I understand the residents, we can put them just.
Sorry, I can't say, sorry.
From, from what I understand, is, well, we can have a, Miss Wildgoose and Jim Wildgoose say something in a few moments, if you're just there with me. I understand that there is, it's the position of this respective thing.
Okay.
And some people, I don't know, it must be some significant reason why they won't let you put it in that position.
Has that been made clear? No, that's not what it is at all. It clearly says here, anybody that supports an application will not be supported, will not be permitted to speak if no objectors. So, there's nobody here in the public gallery allowed to speak, to object to it. So, which also, which, I'm not, I don't make these rules up, but it says, no applica, hang on, it says, supporters of the application, so if they support where it wants to go, they are not allowed to speak if no one's allowed to object to it. And that's clearly what it says here, I don't make these rules up, I'm trying to be right and do what's right, as I always get told you have to do. Clearly says that.
Mr Mayor, councillor McCrae, and I've seen this in Knighley White over the last few days, wants to move the pedestrian crossing to a different location. The people in Carpenters Court do not want that and that's why they are here to speak and they want to speak and I think they should be allowed to have their voice. This is a democratic country and it is not run by the wistful McCrae, so please, you do not interrupt me.
Okay.
I, I've had enough threats from your side this morning.
Not me, I've been asked to speak here.
So, when it is up my, so, let's leave it at that. I wouldn't say it should be allowed to be.
Please, Mr Mayor.
Just, just, just one, just one, just one, everyone, please. I've got one, I've got one member of the public that's allowed to speak, as far as I understand it, I think.
They've made the correct application to be able to speak, so they were granted that opportunity. We do have somebody that wants to object to it, who was late in applying, so it's at your discretion if you wish to allow that person to speak and then both of them will be allowed to speak in line with this standing order.
Well, if there's, if there was more than one person that's been, wanted to speak and not allowed to because they didn't have the application in before, I'm afraid we can't, can't have a speak.
So, then the rules stand, right? So, I'm right?
Standard voting.
Yeah, that's right, thank you. I didn't make the rules, I'm not having a go at you, but the rules are the rules.
So, so, Mr Mayor, these people, these are the people who are waiting for this application to go through and have, and I've seen it to Knighley White, we'll stop it. Are not allowed to have their say here, I think that's totally undemocratic. It isn't their fault that the person who wanted to speak against it didn't put their application in on time, that is not their fault. They put their application in, they followed all the protocols.
But the previous clause does say what it says in G and that's what we've got to stick by. We can't bend the rules, we can't tell if we want to.
In line with, just to try and resolve this matter, in line with standing orders on motions that can be moved without notice, I move to suspend standing orders sixty-two A and sixty-two G for the duration of thirty minutes to allow both members of the public to speak.
Fair enough. Nice to follow that as well.
Yeah.
Right, fair, it's fair, the rules are rules, I think. We'll have a vote for that then.
It is fair, fair. I don't want any rules.
Okay, I'd carry.
Now, just talk to me like I'm some fool, rules are rules. Now, they've been changed by supporters. Pussy cat, that's why I'm speaking now.
Please don't, speak through the chair, please. Sorry, no. So, we're all gentle, also heard. Okay, Maria White will be speaking currently. Is she here? Okay, fine.
Would you like me to start now?
Yes, you may say.
I'll speak up.
Yeah, I think you'll have, it'll be five minutes?
Three minutes.
Or three, sorry, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, councillor, lady and everybody for letting me speak to you tonight. I would like to state that I'm here to object at proposed location of the zebra crossing to the site adjacent to Carpenter Court. This location, in my opinion, was wholly dangerous. This is based on my frequent four times daily use of Higgins Lane, both as a pedestrian and a car driver, as well as many friends and associates who use this road. I have seen numerous near misses that could have led to collisions between cars and pedestrians due to the high number of business entrances in a very small area between Maranello Cars and the Mini Roundabout at the junction of Ilkaston Road. There are seven vehicles with and clear access to Carpenter Court within a very short distance of the proposed crossing, meaning six different entrance and exit points for vehicles to join Higgins Lane. During commuter hours and at lunchtime between the hours of twelve and two, this structure poses chaos with a high level of road users turning, HGV and other delivery vehicles accessing premises. This is compounded by visitors to Carpenter Court and customers of the businesses parking on double yellow lines, thus causing restricted. thus causing restricted use of uncoming traffic. To add a zebra crossing into the mix whereby very young children, disabled and elderly pedestrians, many of whom cannot use a zebra crossing with any great speed, could be an accident waiting to happen. In fact, councillor Gordon, who was chair of the safety committee when I spoke to her by email, agreed with me on this point in an email reply to myself in February, where she stated that despite her voicing her own thoughts and preferences to decline this proposed location prior to the meeting at Beeston Town Hall, when this was originally set for planning committee, her colleagues felt differently. If anyone would like to see this response, I have this hand this evening. The agreement which was signed between the council and the landowners developers called a section one O six agreement. Would you like to say something, councillor?
Please, keep, keep going on.
Clearly states that the preferred location is between Ulan Lane and Washington Drive. The payment made to the council by the landowners was made on this agreement. Surely, if the agreement is to be changed, it should have taken, it should have taken back to those who made the payments to if they agree with the change of location. One can presume this has not happened. To conclude, I urge the town council to reject the proposed location adjacent to Carpenter Court and instead consider the option adjacent to Ulan Lane and Washington Drive. This option has no other entrance or exit points for businesses or residential driveways. Therefore, this area of Higgins Lane would have unrestricted views to both road users and pedestrians alike. The option of this location is the safest by far. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, over to next. Jim Wildgoose.
Thank you, thank you for letting me.
You have, you have three of them, sorry.
Thank you.
And, and, would, would ask people not to interrupt while she's speaking, please?
Um, and actually, the objectors comments in fact are not my case, I believe. I don't presume to officially represent all fifty-seven residents at Carpenter Court, but I know that the majority, if not all of them, are as concerned as I am at the delays that are taking place in constructing the crossing. Many of the residents have mobility problems, several have buggies and all wheelchairs, and many of us with sticks or other walking aids. Trying to cross Higgins Lane to visit the car, the only nearby shop, I might add, can be a nightmare. There have been several near misses, you're quite tr- you're quite right, and many of us can spend a relatively long time waiting to cross safely. There are no double yellow lines on our side of Higgins Lane. This means we often have to step into the road to see around large badly parked vehicles. The crossing will reduce that hazard, and it will also reduce the danger we often face from speeding vehicles. The crossing was the subject of a section one O six planning order, which I believe means it was a condition for McCartham Stone to pay for the crossing to be constructed before any of us took up residence. Presumably a requirement for the safety of the residents. Forty thousand pounds was handed over to the council maybe three years ago. After much delay, we are very close to achieving this much needed crossing. However, it has come to my attention that councillor McCrae is attempting to have the agreed position of the crossing changed to a place of his choosing, regardless of the fact that Rockstone Council, Rockstone Borough Council planning meeting last October agreed that the third site for those of us who need it most. The council's surprising walkout from that meeting when he failed to get his own way did not, in my opinion, exhibit responsible professional behaviour, and in not accepting the results of a democratic process, he is not, in my opinion, someone who should represent the whole of state for his mayor next year. To his preferred site for the crossing would make the residents of Carpenter Court walk significantly further and would entail crossing Washington Drive on the way to the car and on the way back. We would also risk traffic using the offset crossroads of Washington Drive and Ulan Lane. I ask councillor McCrae why he continued in his attempt to get the approved site of the crossing changed. His actions could delay construction even more and continue to put the residents of Carpenter Court, many in their eighties, at even further risk. How would he feel if, God forbid, there's an accident which seriously injures or even kills one of us trying to cross this busy road, particularly during the coming winter months? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, okay.
I just want to, to, to say one thing there. I didn't actually walk out of the meeting in disgust. At, at planning committee, when you just, when you're a ward councillor and you've got predetermined, you're not allowed to talk on issues. At Rockstone Borough Council, when that happens, you have to get up and leave the chamber. It's a condition that they make me do. And I just wanted to sit in the members' room because I wasn't allowed to be in the debate because I was predetermined. And then once the debate was finished, I was invited back into the chamber. So I wasn't, I wasn't allowed to speak and I wasn't allowed to vote, which is fair enough because I was predetermined. And that's why I left the chamber. So I don't mind being accused of something I didn't do because I didn't. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Does anyone else want to say anything? Simon, yes.
As a lorry driver, I know that roundabout very well. I know how dangerous it is, how soon it misses, and I can almost see both sides of the argument from both people. I think it's about time that those roundabouts were taken out and replaced with traffic lights, pedestrian crossing lights as well, because everybody takes their own life into their hands, pedestrians, cyclists, car user, anybody. It's ill thought out of the double roundabout system. It could be the bind of those lorry drivers because people would just pull out straight in front of you. And trying to cross that when you're being a, uh, pedestrian, oh, how about you? But I also under- also understand why Richard's coming from, from on there. So, being a reasonable chap, I would suggest, if possible, to redo the crossing with a pedestrian crossing and put a zebra crossing at Ulan Lane for the children that are nearly hit every time by cars. I've seen one child hit in a broken lane by somebody, when you had the crossing, they were standing there, holding up, and they just went straight through and clipped the kid. And I think that that needs to be sorted out, and I can see both sides of the argument. I'm not being a, somebody sitting on the fence, trust me, I'm too big to break it. It's a case of, I, I just see both of you where you're coming from. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming.
Okay, have a go.
Mr Mayor. This, this pedestrian crossing has been going on for three years, three years. These should be able to pay money for that crossing. Um, I think if you take a look with all due respect, you'll see that some of them are not, um, perhaps as stable on their feet as others. The positioning of the zebra crossing, as it is now going through, has been a long thought out, um, plan. We have spoken to, um, Stephen Saunders, we have spoken to the county council about this. They've all come to the conclusion that the best place for it is where it is positioned now, where it has been positioned now. To start changing things, we'll delay this for another goodness knows how many years. This is, this is money that has been spent, which is in, in the hands of our borough council, and this is just, um, I won't make this personal, but I've, because I couldn't. Because there, there are people in this room that, um, are turning this into a personal battle between me and them, and it should, that isn't right. We should be thinking about the people in Carpenter Court. Many of them who are eighty years of age with limited ability to walk properly along distances, they don't want to be crossing roads. If we move the crossing to where councillor McCrae would do it, they will have to cross roads before they can get to the crossing. If we position it where the, the council decided to position it, they won't have that danger. It isn't, it isn't that close to the, the Mini Roundabout. It is a dangerous area, the whole road is a dangerous area, I'm not, I'm saying it isn't. But it's been well thought out by planners and, and by the, the people that are installing it. That's all I've got to say, but I think there's, there's a lot of mystery making, and Carpenter Court residents deserve better.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify what, where exactly you're the, so, so I've got, I've got the plan of where it's proposed by Rockstone. I'm just not a hundred percent sure where the objectors were wanting it to be positioned. I've got a hard day.
Mr Mayor, today I have plans of, um, the original grievance and also the plans that were presented at Rockstone Borough Council.
Thank you. We was trying to see the, uh, the actual drawings.
Yeah, that's the proposed site.
I thought I'd been married, the guy at the bar.
Right, so, like you see, the, uh, the, the planning office have decided to put it in, uh, in one position and that you're, you're objecting, I think, a bit closer to, um, the junction.
I'm not even sure, yeah, everyone's just assuming what I've said, I've not said anything, I'm saying.
But, okay, but, right, okay, just tell me, tell me what you, what you've got, I've just had all of the drawing.
Right, I've got a copy of the section one O six agreement, and I'm sure everybody's read it, that's not a problem, and I'll unpick through it in a minute. But all I wanted to say, when, when this, when the application was first submitted by Simba and McCarthy Stone to, um, build the, um, the complex, brilliant, they're good, you know, it's green, safe and good. And I contacted Rockstone Borough Council and said to Stephen, is there any chance we can, section one O six agreement asked for a pedestrian crossing in a certain location? And when I asked for that, nothing else was built. So I spoke to people on the estate, most people, hundreds of people on the estate, all round that end, St Fiddler and the other side as well. Do you think the crossing would be gone there? I couldn't speak to anyone else because they weren't there. So I spoke to the people that was there and they told me. So when I went to the council, we requested it in a certain location, and when we went to the original planning committee, we agreed that's where it would go. And I remember as clear as day, I'm not gonna say his name because he's nice saying it, and I'm just a thorn box, I mean, it's, it's, we all need it. A certain councillor said, and you're probably gonna be saying this approximately, you should listen to all the councillors, this is what all the councillors said, because they know their word best. And I do believe that, because people vote for you, you know your word best. So that's, and he said that's where it should go, so brilliant. And then he talked forever and a day. It actually says in here, I heard someone today saying the residents have paid for this crossing. It actually says here, it was a gre- agreement between the owner, the owner was Simba, Simba paid for it originally. Obviously, when. Obviously, once the houses have been sold and people have bought them, they can't have produced some money, so you can obviously that way, I can understand that, but. I have no clue what's happening today.
Have some respect, people.
So it clearly says in the section one O six, the agreement was made on the twenty fifth of November twenty sixteen, and it was signed. And if you look at the back, it was signed by the mayor, whoever that was, I'm, I'm sorry to be rude, I don't remember. The owners can't read properly, and this standing order, it clearly says Simba appeared, and it says councillor, and it said McCarthy and Stone. So like I've said, obviously, when they sold their properties and they recruited money, that was, I, I can see that that's found in one, that way or another. So, so I get that. But then as you go through the one O six, it actually says that owner, but at the beginning we told you that owner was Simba. For one pedestrian crossing, one month prior to commencement of the development, to pay pedestrian crossing a contribution to the council. So again, it says Simba had paid for it. Is everyone allowed to butt in on, talking, I don't do a bit of talking. Okay, the next page, it says pedestrian crossing. As soon as reasonably possible, following the receipt of the pedestrian crossing contribution from the owner, the owner being Simba, as it says here, if it, if it's wrong, then I don't know, but I've got to sign it. And then it says to commit all sums received in respect of pedestrian crossing contribution in constructing and completing the crossing, works within two months of completion of the crossing, to repay any monies which have not been used in carrying out these works, so in case it's a bit cheaper, and to return these, to return, repay any monies which have not been used to Simba plant, looted, whether or not they remain the registered part of the land. So I'll give you a few monies to, I'll give you a pay for something, so it says again. Now, when, when this was requested, the preferred location, which is in section one O six, which was signed and agreed, clearly says here, I might make this up, you can get it on the website, it clearly says preferred location, you see. So when these people sign this document, that's what they were signing for. Now, if I go to Sandy Cliff and order a red Esther, I can't go back on Monday and then give me a blue box on. Because now, I'm going, I'm going, I've signed for that and got that. Then down here, no part of the development hereby permitted shall be brought into use to the crossing and the standard. It goes on and on. Now, I, I never had the opportunity to speak to the residents in Cartham. to speak to the residents in Carpenter's Court, because if anybody's ever rang me or emailed me, I support councillor, one of the borough councils prior to the elections, it was me and councillor on at the time, I am aware the meetings were placed and I did contact both councillor board and I contacted Stephen Saunders, asking if I could go to these meetings, because I wanted to hear what I want seven, I imagine most people around this table know what I'm like anyway, I'll listen to everybody. And if I think that's a good idea and you say it's not, I would say that, because that's what we're there to, and I've done it every time and I'll keep doing that. But I was denied that opportunity. So a few meetings were placed and I wasn't allowed to go to them. And I've had nothing but abuse and shouting and screaming. And it was witnessed by councillor Hallam number two over there, which is going to get difficult. Some gentleman came up to me shouting and bawling, swearing, calling my own names under the sun and a liar, it was nothing to do with me. Of course it was, I don't ask for it. And I've had that when I've gone to the shops of people. And I don't think it's so real, but other people have come up to me shouting and bawling. And I know where they've come from, because I've watched them go back and I think it's rude. And I've never spoken to anybody like that. So I was denied the opportunity. So I've never had anybody say to me, Richard, put it there, because if that building was built and we were doing this now, I'd also listen to everybody. And what I would have said was, let's put the crossing there where they wanted it, and then let's have another one down here as well for the kids, because the only kids crossing to go to school, the people going to the church, all this, it was there when this first came around. So I couldn't give the views of people that didn't live there, because they didn't live there. I've been denied the opportunity to talk to the people. And obviously councillor board for me to do that, and that's what she's been asked to do, and she's doing it, and that's the right thing to do. But I was denied that opportunity. So to be called, all the people are going to make sure I don't get elected next time around, I'm not good enough to be the mayor, actually. I think that's disgusting, because I would happily sit in a room of people and say to them, tell me your views. And I represent you as well, but nobody's ever done that to me. Nobody's approached me, I might have an email, I might have a phone call, I might have come over, Richard, and I've been over there. I took, used to extol the residents in there when we first moved in, with Chris and him, obviously not here, you know, because I want part of the community, let's all talk in around, right? But I've been denied that, I don't know if I'm funny. But I've never been denied, I've been denied that opportunity. So I don't think it's fair for people to say, he's this, he's that, he's not good enough for this, that and the other. They don't know me, they've never spoken to me. So I'm never been given that opportunity. Now, if somebody rang me up and it's something minor just round the corner, I don't deal with myself. It's something very issue. When I'm councillor, I'm going for the all the councillor meeting, to start with. I always emailed him, John, someone asked me this, let's go and meet them. And we did to start with, and I don't know what went wrong, because I thought, he knows things I don't know, I know things he doesn't know, and we work together. And there's lots of councillors around this table, I've sat and done things with, and I enjoyed them in there. But I've been denied that opportunity. So that's all I wanted to say. I'm not, obviously I don't want to vote on it, and it's the county council makes the decision, but I don't, it's the county council that will have their overall say. And if people want to stop it in a different place, please do write in and tell the county council that. But there's a whole load of people on the estate that want it in the place that I originally asked for, because that's where they told me. And I've said to them, write in as well. And then it's down to the county council. We can only, it's everybody sat around this table, there was a councillor prior to the elections, said put it between him and me, every single councillor around this table. Obviously it's been the administration now, who will change their minds, I get all that. But we do write in, and if everyone around me goes, no, we don't, let's put it there, they do that, and if they say put it somewhere else, they do that, that's democracy. But I just don't think it's fair. I've been accused of this, that and the other. That's never even happened. I'm not writing that.
No reply, Puck. Yes, Richard, this is a grown house, we've got venues. Because I've had it on your community group.
I can't speak to people for comments on my website.
I have in my hand a letter from McCarthy and Stone to one of the residents. I will read it. Thank you for your letter, dated 8th August 2019. I am sorry to hear that there have been further delays in the construction of the pedestrian crossing at Carpenter Court. As you are aware, payment of £40,000 was made to Broxton Borough Council in November 2016. We were advised by the local council that the construction should have commenced in late 2019. And it goes on and on about the, following technical approval, this will then start process, oh, there, who provide highways and fleet management in Nottinghamshire, is due to issue a letter to the county council to explain the terms of the section 278 legal agreement between the county council of Broxton Borough Council. Following the technical approval, this will then start the notice process required under section 23 of the Road Traffic Regulations Act 1984. The notice process requires consultation as a plea into public notice of a proposal to introduce the crossing. Mark Thompson, the North Area Team Leader, Broxton Borough Council, has advised that has been added pressure put on the county council to try and ensure everything takes place as quickly as possible. And we will continue to monitor closely to ensure the works are completed as soon as possible. I also have a document in my hand from November 2016, which is an agreement. McCarthy and Stone Retirement Lifestyle Limited, the developer, Broxton Borough Council, the council, pedestrian crossing contribution, £40,000, pedestrian crossing works to be constructed as far as reasonably possible in the preferred location, see page 15, option two. And the council have given them the planning permission and everything is ready to go and set to go now unless we have people who are objecting. And that will slow it down again, as I said previously, perhaps for another two or three years. Meanwhile, these people are not able to cross the roads safely, nobody's been crossing there. It is basically their money. They've paid. It's not going to go where they want it, then I suggest the Broxton Borough Council give them them on that.
Yeah, so I've got to be honest with you, I am very tall on this. I actually think that both locations are just as dangerous as each other. My feeling is that further down the road, people have already started to slow down to turn into the co-op and for the mini roundabout. And that, at the minute, is the only thing that is swaying me on the way. It concerns me, the proposition more being between the junctions, the two junctions coming out onto Higgin's Lane. And I do feel that, and I appreciate the section 106 agreement, I do, I take that on board, but as I understand it, that the borough and the county will both want to be able to link back how they spend that funding on that crossing to Carpenter Court and to the residents of it. And I don't honestly know how useful any objection that we would make to the current position would actually be.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got claps on Hallam. Okay.
So the council's had the technical load assessments. The technical assessments is the county council who have got paid and trained officers in this to assess the traffic loads and where it should go. So what?
It's all been done. The traffic flow, please, that's all been done. It just now needs to check any objections for it not to go ahead. Everything has been done. They have, in those terms, they think that this is the safest place, particularly for the Carpenter Court residents because of their mobility problems. Otherwise, they've got to cross two roads to get to a pedestrian crossing, whereas where it is going to be located, it is a dangerous place there. You know, the Higgin's Lane is, it's a dangerous big place. You get lots of people racing up and down there. I've lived there though, you know, fifty years.
So that's that technical, so that's technical.
But the technical side of it, they haven't looked at it very carefully, they haven't monitored it. It's been, there have been so many visits and so much money already being spent on making sure that all these issues are addressed.
So whatever we say, the parish council, it might not be taken with as much weight of gravitas as what that technical position would be, as in a sense of.
Why precisely are we, it's a fascinating conversation and obviously very high stakes. I want to work out exactly what we're trying to achieve as a council right now. Is it to make a recommendation from this council to the planning application, in which case that would imply to me that the planning permission has not already been granted, because it's a consultation? Or has it already been granted, in which case why are we even having this conversation, because it's going to get on?
Planning permission was granted by Broxton Borough Council, yeah, of course it was, yeah. I was there, I had to walk out the room, I didn't walk out because I was upset, I had to leave. It's now going to the county council, and I might be wrong here, as the highways authority do have to give the overall permission. That's what it is. And as I said earlier, if people, I've been asked by residents on the estate here and the estate here to represent, but they're the ones that spoke to me. So that's all I can do. And they've asked me to say it should be there. That's what I'm doing. Nobody's come to me and said, put it in another place. I'm not saying don't put it there, and I've not put anything in book of knowledge saying that. I haven't at all. And if anyone says that, I haven't done that. Now, what I'm saying is, if people want it to go outside Carpenter's Court, they've got there, residents in the area, give them this, tell the council, write into the county council, say that's where you want it to go. The same as if residents, and I've told the people here, I mean, I had a petition with 391 people, mostly off the estate side, it's some of the artists of the estate, the most were, that wanted it there. So it's write in, say that. And then it's down to the county council to do the final thing and put it wherever. Or as a suggestion, can we ask them too? I don't know, but wherever that one's going, the county council have their overall say. And if people want to put it there, write in and say that. I can't record that people lose approach to me. I just need to say something. I can't make so far.
Is there still a school crossing person further down the road?
No, not on this stretch, right. It's right down the road.
Because when I used to pick, obviously I'm going back, my kids are grown now, but is there a person?
No.
Both on Black Cross Street.
Both on Black Cross Street. They have been there ever since I've lived there.
Yeah, so to cross, to cross it.
There are two crossings, yes.
Yeah. So what I'm saying, thinking about is that busy times for kids getting to school, if there's a crossing person at that port.
Yeah, that would help. But there isn't, there isn't, there is one on the other side that has danced there, it's been there forever, it's been repeated obviously. But there isn't one on this stretch, no.
What, on Higgin's Lane?
Yeah, on Higgin's Lane, aren't they?
Yeah, next to the metro centre. So people coming off the estate would probably win kids.
No, there isn't one on this end, no. There's one on Black Cross Street junction, Higgin's Lane, but there isn't one on this end, no.
But would they need to?
It would be nice if they did, because hundreds of kids cross there every day.
But they would have the crossing then, wouldn't they?
That's why I asked for it there, because there's no one on this stretch, because I don't want it there.
Right, okay.
Oh, councillor Hallam.
So just to answer councillor Hallam's question, Richard, councillor Craig asked me to put this on the agenda, and then I did get another request as well through post from VIA for us to consider a response. So this item on the agenda is for us to consider whether we want to respond, and if we do, in what fashion we want to respond. So yeah, I'll move to the moment in the next part, obviously.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. And it's been, it's been very interesting to hear a lot of, a lot of all, all very pertinent points. And it's a really difficult position. And I don't, I don't like to be in a position of choosing either or when frankly what we, what we need ultimately is something. And so I'm going to be voting just to explain why, in fact, I would, with the legal commission, I'd like to, I'd like to move, that we as a council recommend that we do not impede the progress of the crossing we've already been waiting for so long for. But since we've been invited to make a submission to VIA, that we also as a council voice our concerns that that does not solve the whole problem of Higgin's Lane. And that additional funding from whatever the source, whether it's section 106, county funds, borough making a submission to county from otherwise six funds, such as field farm, that this, that we get additional crossing measures, not just in that location, on Higgin's Lane. We need this one now and we need more later, because it is still a hazard. I would, I would like to put that to word of consideration, please.
So just to clarify, you're asking us to move, you're moving to support the current crossing?
Yes.
And to respond to the council saying that we feel that that one crossing is not sufficient for Higgin's Lane?
Yes.
Okay, have a second. Sorry, I'm trying to do my job.
No, councillor problem.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll second it.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was going to say. I agree with everything the team says for the simple reason, these people are more like an honour of more life, so I know what you're coming for.
Doesn't stop anybody from responding to the county council by 70th of September, so anybody who might be.
I think, just a point of order, sorry to cut you off, but we have already moved to the moment.
Okay, can I have a vote on that?
I'm sure you're, I'm going, but the thing is, I don't think you're really straight in standing order. That's what I'm missing. But you have one anyway.
You didn't really state standing orders, but you give it a time limit of 13 minutes, so it's automatically restarted.
Anyway, yeah, sorry. So we've moved to the moment.
Okay, so if we have councillor Hallam's suggestion? I'm seconded. All in favour of councillor Hallam?